Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Atomo City Council meeting. Before we go into our regular council meeting, however, we're going to have a short Atomo Board of Health meeting. But before we start that, would everybody rise and we're going to recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
So I'm going to call the Board of Health meeting to order, and Chris will go ahead and take the roll call.
Councilmember Hull?
Here.
Councilmember Pope?
Here.
Councilmember Rowe?
Here.
Councilmember Galloway?
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Approve the minutes for meeting number three on June 7, 2022, as presented. Recommendation: Approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set to consider condemnation of the structures of the property located at 157 South Iowa Avenue in the city of Atomo, Wapalo County, Iowa.
I'm going to go ahead and open the condemnation hearing, and I believe Jake and Zach are going to take this.
Good evening, Council. The property that in question today is located at 157 South Iowa. This property was placarded on August 5 of 2021. It is placarded for living conditions and lack of utilities. The owners of the property have moved out of town and had very little contact with our department. There's no current repair plan and no current -- any right to be on the property. The city's had to mow the property, and we just did a cleanup on the outside of the property just in the last couple of weeks. It remains open to the elements and squatters. And on April of 2022, there was a fire in the property that made the structure even more dangerous. There's still several code violations, and the condemnation was served by certified mail posting on the property and in the courier as staff recommendation to go ahead and condemn this property.
Does Council have any questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the condemnation hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Condemn the structures located at 157 South Iowa Avenue. Order prompt demolition, removal, and leveling of the lot, and direct all costs intended to such actions, including administrative costs, to be assessed against the property and/or collected from the owner or owners thereof. Recommendation: Approve the condemnation of the structures located at 157 South Iowa Avenue.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
I believe that is all that we have to do with the Board of Health meeting tonight, so I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Chris will go ahead and take the roll.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Okay, now we will start with the Atomo City Council meeting, and we've already said the Pledge of Allegiance, so Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Hull?
Here.
Councilmember Pope?
Here.
Councilmember Rowe?
Here.
Councilmember Galloway?
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here. Before we get any further into our meeting, we're going to start off with a real positive thing tonight, and I'm very happy that the Klingman family is here. And we're going to recognize Collins Klingman, who is the son of Judy and Jim Klingman, and he has attended the Special Olympics USA, which was held in Florida on June 5 through the 22nd of 2022, and he was able to win a bronze medal and a gold medal. And we have a certificate here for him tonight that I'm going to present to him. And Collins has participated in Special Olympics since he was eight years old, so he's not a newcomer to this. And he also trained a whole year to get ready for this event in Florida this summer. So if Collins would come up front, I'm going to go ahead and present you with this plaque from the City Council and the City of Atomo.
Okay, and I think Councilmember, I'd like to say something too. But this is in recognition of Collins Klingman, bronze medal winner for the 50-meter race and gold medal winner for the 100-meter walk. On behalf of the City of Atomo, congratulations on your outstanding performance during the Chancun Payor, June 21, 2022. So thank you. And I believe, Councilmember, I'd like to say two things.
You know, I started working at TenCo roughly 10 years ago, and when I walked in the doors at TenCo, that young gentleman there is the -- one of the very first people who greeted me when I walked in the doors. And I've gotten to watch Collins grow so much over the last 10 years and become the winner that he is today. And I just got to tell you, Collins, I couldn't be more proud of you, buddy.
Congratulations.
Very proud of you.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Amazing. Check out the middle.
You're welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting if you like, or whenever you want to leave is fine, too. Okay, next thing is the consent agenda, and I think Kim -- Chris is going to go over that.
I would recommend a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Now we need an approval for tonight's agenda, so do we have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Next item is the Administrator's Report to the Council and the citizens of Atomo. I'm going to turn it over to our City Administrator, Phil Rath.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. The first item that I had on here is a quarterly report from Mida Tamwa, and I'm going to invite Laura up to the podium. She's got a brief presentation to the Council. For those that don't know, Laura was appointed to the board only just a couple of short months ago.
So hello, Council, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Rath. Thank you for giving me some of your time today. The Convention and Visitors Bureau has gone through many identities over the years. Most recently, the Greater Atomo Convention and Visitors Bureau is the longest name in the world, incorporated in 2018, where our own entity with a board of directors, which includes representatives from the city, the county, GOPIP, and many other organizations with direct ties to tourism in our community, like restaurants and hotels, local business owners, and directors of our local attractions. We rebranded in 2021 to Mida Tamwa, where Iowa meets the world. We felt it was our job to show our pride and our diversity. So Mida Tamwa is located in the Bridgeview Center lobby. Next slide, please. And we're a full-service convention and visitor center. Next. Should have a clicker. There are two of us in our office. I've been the executive director since January of this year, and Olson Miller is our graphic designer, social media coordinator, technological guru, whatever term you want to give him for the day, he's happy with it. Mida Tamwa has three very distinct roles that we fill. We assist leisure travelers. We work with meeting planners, and we support our local businesses and organizations. So the first part, when it comes to leisure travel, we're on the front lines of that customer service before, during, and after a visitor comes to Atomo. So the bulk of our social media, if you're on our social media platforms, is directed at visitors to the city and to Wapalo County. You can find us on all your favorite social media platforms as Mida Tamwa. All of those are listed there for you on the handouts that you received. I encourage you to look for us and to interact with us. Every Tuesday, we send events emails or sales emails to more than 1,200 subscribers. They all contain links that connect to our website for more information, whether it be the events calendar or the listings for individual restaurants or attractions. On mida tamwa dot org, you'll find itineraries and guides and featured events, as well as dining, lodging, and attraction listings. Anyone who wants to submit information for their business or their organization is more than welcome. We can't promote anything that we don't know about. Our office, like I said, is in the lobby of Bridgeview Center. We have local, regional, and state visitor guides, plus all the maps and advice you could ever want when visiting our community, plus we have an Atomo-themed gift shop for people looking for souvenirs. We work closely with Travel Iowa and Iowa Economic Development to direct the flow of visitors to the state to come to our county while they're here. This year, we'll be doing this through the leads generator on the Travel Iowa website, Travel Iowa-supported social media, and access to arrivalist data, which basically they take cellphone data from people who are in the city limits, within counties, and within states, and they can tell us in black and white numbers who's coming to our city, how long they stay, and what they're doing while they're here. It's a little Big Brother-ish, but it's incredibly important for us to know where we need to be focusing our marketing. The second part of our job is working with meeting planners and organizers. We actively pursue meetings, conferences, conventions, and we do that for several reasons. It's the best way to bring a large group of people to Atomo all at one time. We're event planners ourselves in our office, and we're able to be the boots on the ground here when planners are in other locations. We have a dedicated page on our website where planners can submit an initial RFP, and now with the building of the cobblestone, we'll be focusing on groups that specifically want to have an onsite hotel before they will agree to bring their meetings and their conventions here. We work with dozens of planners every year, and in the next three months, we're hosting our own video game tournament this weekend, the first of its -- the newest of its kind in Iowa, as well as helping with the Greater Atomo Rodeo, the Midwest Ford Fest, American Planners Association, just to name a few. And finally, and most importantly, we do everything possible that we can to build relationships with our local owners and leaders. We are daily promoting restaurants, attractions, hotels, and shopping every single day, and we want to make sure that we do what's beneficial for them, so that we're not living in our little Mida Tamwa bubble doing what we think is best. So when we receive event submissions and you have in your handout the QR code that goes directly to our submit page, new business information, events, just exciting things that are happening in the community, we apply the promotion strategy that's there, that we can take all of these things from the content on our website to listings on Travel Iowa, to our social media platforms, and even event planning, which we love to do. And it's all absolutely free. There's never any cost to anything that Mida Tamwa does. And that brings us to why we're here today. So our current contract with the city gives us 35% of the hotel motel tax, dividing it up with Bridgeview Center and the Beach Tamwa. So the two-year contract with an automatic third-year extension before you tonight would raise our portion to 40%, with the increase of that going directly to marketing Bridgeview Center and the beach, as well as citywide promotion that we always do. We love what we do in our office, that's why we're there. We promote, and we share, and we interact with our community because we love it. And this additional funding means that we'll be able to do even more. I thank you for your time and attention.
Does Council have any questions for Laura? I would just like to publicly thank you for the outstanding job that you're doing, and I've not seen that kind of enthusiasm in somebody for a very long time. And when she says she's marketing Atomo every single day, her office is absolutely doing that. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
We definitely appreciate that. I can remember moving here 32 years ago, and on my front porch, I had a basket of stuff, and I'm like, okay, I like this city already. So we definitely appreciate what you do in the community.
It's my pleasure. Thank you.
And as Laura mentioned, later on in the agenda, there'll be a request to update the current agreement, which expires in a few short days. So that's before you later, and we'll get into that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, under the Administrator's Report, is Chief Farrington, who wanted to briefly discuss the possible consideration or reinstatement of the K-9 program.
Thank you, City Minister Phil. Mayor, City Council members, I won't take much of your time tonight. Just wanted to give you and the public an update on what we're doing at the Police Department. One of my initial goals after becoming chief of police was to reinstate our K-9 program and bring back that important service to our community. It's been approximately six years since we lost our canine shark and that program ended. Shortly after becoming chief, a committee was formed. It was made up of police administration, first-line supervisors, police officers, and civilian staff. And the goal there was to make recommendations from everything from breed to the required equipment for this program. Our goal would be to have two canines on staff to have better coverage for the city, and those animals will be multi-purpose trained canine units, everything from tracking for search and rescue to drug detection, narcotics detection. Another goal will be to cover these costs with grant funding, donations, fundraising, and other community partnerships. And with that, the Atomo Police Department is really excited to reinstate this important program, and we hope that the City Council will support us in our efforts. Thank you.
Does Council have any questions, comments for Police Chief Farrington?
I just have one. So when you say the reinstatement, is it like one, two, three dogs?
We're looking at two canines.
Okay, thank you.
And you're looking at splitting those AM, PM?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, so we can have a better coverage for the city.
So more to come on that in the future, as kind of an introduction.
Thank you. You bet.
Provide that update to Council and public. And the last thing, not on the agenda, but something that happened at the last meeting, I just wanted to update and encourage anyone that is listening, or if you know anyone that's interested. Last meeting, City Council passed the ordinance to reestablish the Human Rights Commission. We are actively seeking commission members for that. Applications are available on the city website, or it can be picked up outside the mayor's office on the first floor of City Hall. So if you are interested in serving on the Human Rights Commission or any other boards or commissions, look for an application and turn that in to the mayor's office.
And one application can serve for any of the boards and commissions.
Correct, yes. So if there's multiple boards or commissions you're interested in, note that on that application. And as those vacancies come up, they will be considered by the mayor and confirmed by Council for a majority of our boards or commissions. So, all right, thank you. And I turn it back over to you.
Okay, next is the point in our agenda where I ask if there's citizens that would like to address any of the agenda items tonight, and we do have seven individuals that would like to address the animal ordinance. That's later in our meeting, so I think I'll hold till we get to that part of the agenda to let you speak. Is there anybody else that wants to speak on any of the other agenda items that are on tonight's agenda? And then we have one person that wants to speak on something that's not on tonight's agenda, and that comes towards the end of our meeting, too, so I'll also let him go ahead and speak when we get towards the end of our meeting.
Council update on the property located at 817 Chester. Recommendation: Receive update.
Zach, I believe you're going to handle this.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. This item is to provide an update to the Council on the disposition of the property at 817 Chester. James and Lori Rushman brought this property up at a previous council meeting, and the Council did ask for some further information after staff had looked into what happened here. The property at 817 Chester was acquired by the city in October of 2018. There'd been a derelict property on the -- derelict home on the property which had been demolished, and the city subsequently was able to acquire the property. In July of 2019, the Rushmans had submitted a petition seeking to purchase the property, and a complete timeline for everything related to that petition was included in the packet. I want to highlight a couple of important elements here. What we see is the most important is that a resolution to set a public hearing for consideration of the petition was pulled from the April 7, 2020 Council Consent Agenda and tabled. The Council had concerns that allowing a property which is suitable for development in a strong and vibrant neighborhood to be sold for green space when it could have been used for housing. And it was right -- it was shortly after that, at the May 5, 2020 meeting, that the Council adopted a moratorium on the sale of city-owned lots until we adopted a policy to prevent the sale of lots for green space. The direct connection between this lot and the Council's action to change the policy, I think, is important here. The Council at that time did not want to consider this property, and then at that point, the deposit the Rushmans had made should have been refunded, and the petition promptly closed. It is a mistake, and it is regrettable that the Rushmans were unsure about the property for so long. It should have been closed at that time, and it was eventually closed this year. The sale to facilitate new development of an owner-occupied home on the lot is the right thing to have happen. It's consistent with the policy, and it is the policy that was carried out correctly. The deposit has been refunded, and a letter was sent to the Rushmans with additional information about why the case was disposed this way. And as I said again, I do want to express regret and apologize to the Rushmans that the case took so long, but the outcome is what was supposed to have happened.
Does Council have any questions for Zach?
So to confirm, this was never -- the sale was never voted on by the City Council. So the department heads may have signed something, but the City Council never made action, never approved it. It was removed from the agenda and not put back on until recently, correct?
That's right. So when the petition starts, it circulates between some certain relevant departments, and as the policy was written at that time, the petition fulfilled the policy, and so those were signed off on by the department heads in place at that time. Then, when the Council had the opportunity to consider it, they removed it from the agenda, and they requested staff to change the policy so that it couldn't be considered, and that's what happened. But it is, like I said, at that point that we should have refunded the deposit. They were left kind of waiting to see what would happen after the moratorium. They were left trying to see what would happen with, you know, other possibilities with the lot, but ultimately, the policy is to develop housing on lots where that's appropriate, and that was the outcome that happened here.
Any other comments, questions for Zach?
I got some comments here. I was approached by the Rushmans a little over a month ago, and they still didn't know the status, and they filled that application in in 2019. They was not aware that the City Council later on voted to make it a moratorium for them not to have it. They was not notified at that time either. So for three years, they mowed and took care of that property under the impression that the property was going to be theirs when the City Council voted on that. So they never got their $50 back till just a little over a month ago, and they still never got a letter explaining what happened and why it happened. They found out that the property was sold out from underneath of them, the way I look at it. When Rippling Waters put a sign in the yard that they're the new owners and a house is coming, the tenant at 813, who the Rushmans are landlord of, called them and said, what's going on? There's a sign in the yard saying that this is their property. So where I'm a little upset is from 2019 till now, there hasn't been a whole lot of communication with the Rushmans professionally, and I think that they should have been. We as a council, or at least me, I don't want to speak for anyone else, when we voted to sell that to Rippling Waters, I was not aware that someone else had already showed interest and had a $50 deposit in there to purchase the property, or I would have never voted yes. So there was another time there that they should have been notified that all this stuff was going on, because we seemed like we moved pretty quick to sell it to them and not finish off what we started with, a couple that had showed interest and went through the proper channels to purchase this property.
So I absolutely agree with you to say that we did not communicate correctly with the Rushmans that the petition could not be fulfilled. I agree with you on that 100%. There are a couple of things I would want to kind of clarify. The first is that they have received a letter from, I think it was Phil's office, explaining the reason for the outcome and the reason their deposit was refunded to them.
What date was that?
That would have been last week or the week before. It has been really recently.
That's the point I'm --
Last week, I believe.
That's the point I'm coming from. They waited from 2019 till two weeks ago. I think by law, the city could probably say the property is theirs, and they had a right to sell it to Rippling Waters, but I feel morally that that property should be theirs, and they should be grandfathered in because the new moratorium that passed, passed after the date that they had put a deposit down, and they was waiting on the city.
And so the moratorium was adopted because the petition was not something the Council wanted to fulfill, is something that is important there. Also, I do want to clarify that the Rushmans did receive a letter March 17 about an administrative exception requested to build on the lot, and that was not responded to. And there was also a published notice of public hearing for the sale of the property. So there were intervening steps before the sign went up, was the other thing I did want to clarify. And the last thing is, is as I've said, you know, again, the lack of communication is absolutely regrettable, and I'm sorry about that, but it doesn't mean that the outcome is that we shouldn't have what the policy states, which is to sell that lot to somebody that's going to build a home on it. The remedy for somebody putting in a petition and not having that petition answered is not that they get what they want, it's that the policy needs to be executed, and we need to make improvements to make sure that the communication's better in the future.
I would just like to say, I think this is -- I think that we as a city need to do better, that I don't -- I'm not saying promises are made, but -- or guarantees are made, but we as a city need to do better, that there is a clear understanding that until the Council, in situations like this, until the Council votes on it, then it doesn't go down. I don't -- like, it doesn't happen. I don't -- I think that maybe there was another situation prior to us getting on Council that something similar happened, too, where someone thought they were getting something that they weren't getting. Maybe, I don't know if a promise was made or an expectation was made. So I think as city staff, we need to do a better job to communicate that this is our recommendation, but not all the time do the city -- does the City Council accept our recommendations? And I'm not saying -- I'm not trying to say the Rushmans over there were -- I don't know. I don't know what you were led to believe, but you put a deposit down, and so I believe you were probably led to believe a certain thing, and the Council didn't vote on that. And I feel that we as a city need to do better to communicate, like you said, but we can't just say we're going to communicate better. We need to communicate better.
Not making excuses, but I also think there was also two or three different staff people that came and went during that time, too, which probably helped the communication to break down, not making excuses for it, but I think with the change in staff over that timeframe, too, that probably created some ambiguity on not giving consistent, clear communication to the Rushmans. Does anybody have any other questions, comments for Zach?
So I do, because you gave us dates finally for some of the stuff that
So I, I do, because you gave us dates finally for some of the stuff that I can go back and look at. It actually says that pulling and tabling item B10, setting April 21, 2020 as the date of a public hearing on the disposition of city-owned property located at 817 Chester to James and Lori Rushman for further discussion. Was it at the seventh meeting, or was it at the 21st meeting that they did the, the?
The moratorium. The moratorium was at the May 5 meeting.
May 5 meeting, okay.
That'd be item 17.
So the meeting on the seventh was to set the public hearing for the meeting on the 21st?
Right, but that never.
It never made the meeting on the 21st because it was pulled from the consent agenda to set the public hearing.
To set the public hearing, okay. I just want to make sure I had all my facts straight, so, thank you, Zach. I appreciate it.
And I believe we're just receiving the update, so the city clerk said we don't need to vote on it.
Can I share some information? Can I have copies? Would, would you guys like to look at a copy as I'm sharing?
And just for everybody's benefit, would you go ahead and give your names and your address, please?
Yes, my name is Lori Rushman. I live at 3674 Little Soap Road in Atumwa. So we filed a petition to purchase the vacant lot at 817 Chester. The Atumwa Engineering Department, Planning and Zoning Department, and Health Department all approved it by July 22, 2019. Various delays occurred during the following months, including a moratorium, and we continued checking with the city regarding the process, progress of our petition. During that time, we mowed and maintained the lot. On April 21, 22, we began, again contacted clerk's office, asking why there was a sign in the yard saying "house coming soon." June 13, 2022, we were sent a letter by the city administrator stating that due to the moratorium regarding buildable lots, that our petition was now noncompliant with current policy. And I should have mentioned, Rick Lynch was planning to come with us this evening, and he had a couple obligations that came up, so he wasn't able to. And this paperwork that you're receiving tonight is from Lynch Law Office, basically. They helped us prepare this. Regarding the moratorium, in the council discussion regarding the resolution passed May 5, 2022, placing a moratorium on sale of vacant lots, there was a reference to the ability to sell lots at least 50 feet wide, where a residence or commercial building was being built on the lot. Also, that a vacant lot could be sold for green space if it was too small to build on. The actual resolution only says there is a moratorium of not more than 12 months on the sale of a vacant lot, on vacant lots, those at least 50 feet in width. Unchanged at the expiration of the moratorium would appear to be policy number 422004 for the disposition of city-owned properties, which says, "Lots not suitable for development in residential districts, vacant lots which are not suitable for development as determined by the community development director, and which are located in residential districts, shall be made available to the adjacent property owners prior to any other buyer. The city will send mailed notice to adjacent property owners prior to offering the lot for sale to the general public." And then for zoning, it says on the city's website, there is a list of 45 vacant lots that can be purchased. It lists the address, the size of the lot, zoning classification, and whether or not the development agreement is required. All lots under 50 feet width are marked "no" under the development agreement required, except the lot at 817 Chester, which is 45 feet, and then 524 Maple, which consists of two lots totaling 50 feet in width. 817 Chester is also zoned as an R160, and the zoning requirements state that the minimum lot width is 60 feet, and the minimum lot area for a one-family dwelling must be 7,000 square feet. 817 Chester is only 45 feet wide, and the lot area is only 5,715. If the lot is not suitable for building, we believe we should be given the first opportunity to purchase it. And if you look at the very last paper, it shows the minimum lot square feet, what the R160 is stated as on that. So according to what the attorney found out, like, the lot size is not even big enough for a buildable lot, which we found that very interesting.
So a few of the things that are relevant here, and obviously, the best outcome is for our attorneys to communicate directly with their attorneys, but a few things that I'll note. The first is that I would believe, because there's been nothing enforced as R160 on the zoning map, that the zoning category should have been put as R1 or R150 on the spreadsheet they're looking at. The zoning map does not reflect R160. The second thing, the second thing, excuse me, the second thing, is that a notice was sent March 17 to the Rushmans about an administrative exception. Where the lot is less than 15% smaller than the required width, in this case, we would believe 50 feet, which 45 feet is, there is an opportunity for an administrative exception, and that letter would have been sent to all adjoining property owners, including the Rushmans, to respond before March 28. There was no timely protest filed to that notice, and which is why we perceived, proceeded to grant the administrative exception. As I said, obviously, I think the best outcome here would be for our attorneys to negotiate with their attorneys and to discuss this, but there is no, nothing in this that would believe, believe me to believe the policies as they interpret it. And also, I would note that the policy does say, as determined by the community development director, what lots are and are not developable, and that was the case here. Anything specific about that lot would likely be a result of the council having intended, because the sale of this specific lot was not in their interest, they even put a moratorium on, that we wanted to preserve housing proposal for this lot. That's probably all that there would be anything to get into tonight.
The, the letter that you referenced, March 28, is that 2022?
Yes.
And did you folks receive that letter?
I would like a copy of that to see what.
You can have this one. Seems very common that my office folks don't receive the letters that they don't want to receive.
And just, our attorney has tried multiple times to contact the city attorney with no, no luck and no response back to him. So I don't know what to say as far as getting the attorneys together, because he's not had any luck doing that.
I have his contact information from what you provided me, or at least his email, and I can have our city attorney reach out to him.
That would be great.
My understanding is she has not received any communication from him to date.
That's interesting.
She's in Des Moines.
Yes, she is. That's what he, he is aware of that.
Okay.
Yep. Okay. So is this just?
This is just pretty much an update from our staff to let us know what's going on with this property. And I appreciate your information on it, but I'm, I'm kind of with Zach on this. You, I think that your attorneys kind of need to get together on this and see where the legal it stands, because, to be honest with you, we, four of us, were not here during all of the beginning of this. And I personally, although I know you guys had, you, you said you have first dibs on it, or you were, you know, resident, you know, you own the property next to it, I would rather see that property, have a house put on it. And green space is great, but we have 70-some lots, 40 of them could probably be green space.
But when it's such a small lot, that puts the house very close to our current property. That's our concern.
As long as it's within code, and it would be. I mean, all things.
And if our lot is not big enough, really, shouldn't happen.
That may, the house be 20 foot.
We just, we actually just changed the zoning ordinances, some zoning ordinances not too long ago, so we could build on some of our city lots with the program we're starting. And, and there are two-to-three bedroom homes, and, and they'll be bigger than you think they are. There's one parked around Ward Street that.
So can we be put on the next agenda, or how does that work? Do we just wait and see what happens?
I would recommend having lawyers talk before.
Yeah, I think just to save, just to save face for everybody involved, I think it's probably best that we just let, let the attorneys.
So will you notify us then as to the next steps? Is that?
I'm assuming your attorney would.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing approving the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the North Market Street facade improvements project.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and I believe Zach is going to present.
This project will improve five facades on two buildings on the 100 block of North Market Street in downtown Atumwa. The estimated cost for the project is $375,000. Funds for the project are coming from the city of Atumwa, the building owners, and the Iowa Economic Development Authority through the CDBG program. Bids for the work were accepted until 2:00 p.m. on June 9, 2022, and the full specifications book instead of drawings are available on the city's website. I provided a link there. They were also available in my office during the bid period. Typically, we would have voted on this resolution before we did the bids. That was, I guess, missed this time, but as long as we approve this resolution before we accept the bid, we're all right, unless there's an issue with specifications, and we don't see any. So staff would recommend adopting the resolution.
Does counsel have any questions for Zach? Hearing done, I'd go ahead and entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Still moved.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Resolution number 160, 2022, approving the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the North Market Street facade improvements project. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 160, 2022.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Resolution number 122, 2022, adopting the policy statements governing the operation of the city of Atumwa's Build Atumwa program. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 122, 2022.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Zach, I believe you're going to present.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, counsel. This is a program we're very excited to have come together. We did allocate $150,000 for this program in the CIP to be matched by $150,000 from the Legacy Foundation. Build Atumwa will provide a $10,000 economic development grant to anyone that builds a new single-family home valued at $125,000 or more, and these policy statements would also allow us to provide the same incentive for duplexes if we were to allocate specific funding for duplexes. Right now, we consider the funding allocated to be specifically for single-family homes, as it was all matched by Legacy, and they wanted to limit their allocation just to single-family homes, so we have to add a little bit more money to duplexes. This program is really targeting a few of the things that were identified in the Atumwa Housing Plan. The first is a need to construct at least 154 units of owner-occupied housing valued at more than $125,000. That's the largest share of the owner-occupied housing that we need to construct. Second is that the housing plan identified the missing middle phenomenon, where a lack of quality market rate housing forces higher earners and lower earners to compete over the same homes, which forces the cost of living up and actually cost burdens lower-earning families. So not just building affordable housing, but also building middle-income housing helps us to alleviate that cost burden issue. We've also had, as the, or, we've also had a situation where we've averaged only five new single-family homes per year over the last decade, and that's why we've averaged demolishing four. So that's only a net gain of one unit. That pace is going to be inadequate to meet the needs of people in Atumwa, and is a reason to incentivize. The study calls for, what it calls "gap financing," which is a pool of funding set aside and allocated for the purpose of closing the gap between what it costs to build housing and what that housing is valued at the end, and that's what this, our program is meant to do. The last thing I'll say is that we did put a amended resolution at all of your seats this evening. Speaking to our attorneys, their recommendation was that we beef up the original resolution by putting more language that spells out clearly the public purpose behind the funding, and also adds an action statement that says the, that the city of Atumwa's Build Atumwa program, including but not limited to making economic development grants, under the program, is hereby declared to be a public undertaking. And so those are what's in the amendment, more specific language about the public purpose, and a declaration that we're pursuing a public purpose with the program. So staff would recommend first voting to adopt the amendment, and then second, voting to adopt the resolution.
Any questions for Zach? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hall?
Your honor, I think we'd want to.
I would make a motion that we accept the amended resolution as presented.
I thought we had to vote on it, one, first, and then vote on the amended.
A vote on the amendment before we voted on the resolution.
Okay.
Okay, just so someone want to make that motion?
Mark made that motion. Or Councilperson Rowe. I apologize.
And I'll second that.
Who wants to second it?
Just going to second it.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Okay, so we're voting on the amendment first. Correct.
Okay.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
And now we're going to vote on the original resolution.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
Yes.
And I have Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
And Councilmember Rowe seconded it. Okay, so Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
I hope everybody followed along.
Resolution number 161, 2022, awarding the contract for the North Market facade street improvements to Christener Contracting Incorporated of Atumwa, Iowa, in the amount of $277,777. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 161, 2022.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, Zach?
All right, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, counsel. This goes back to the facade project that we discussed the specifications for just a couple resolutions ago. Bids were received until 2:00 p.m. on June 9. Two bids were received, and Christener Contracting Incorporated had the winning bid in the amount of $277,777. An itemized account of the bid was sent to the architect for review and has been approved. The bid is $97,223 less than the cost estimate. So if it does hold at that cost, then we'll have to look at the duplication of benefits policy that was with the grant, but we would expect there to be some savings from both the city's share and the property owner's share as part of this grant project.
Counsel have any questions for Zach? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Resolution number 162, 2022, approving the 10-year lease agreement between the city of Atumwa and the U.S. DOT FAA for space at the Atumwa Regional Airport, and repealing resolution number 60, 2022. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 162, 2022.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Okay, and I believe Phil is going to take this.
I can do that. So this may look familiar. This is something that we'd actually kind of taken a crack at before. The FAA has been leasing space from the city of Atumwa or the, out at the airport for the purpose of operating an antenna and associated equipment. Prior lease for the FAA expired September 30, 2020, and they request a new lease with the expiration date of September 30, 2031. We held a public hearing and approved that new lease back on March 15. The FAA has subsequently made some minor modifications to the lease, and the city now wishes to approve, or we're requesting that you approve the final revised agreement with FAA. The termination date of the lease, lease premises, rental rate, none of that has changed between the two versions, so we do not require a new public hearing. hearing. But we wanted to make sure that this was in conformance and that the revised lease would be accepted by Council and we can get that signed by the FAA. Resolution number 60-20-22, in the March 2022 draft of the lease agreement between the City of Atumwa and FAA were, are requested to be repealed with the June 2022 version of the lease agreement between the city and FAA to be approved, and the mayor and city clerk authorized the director to execute the lease on behalf of the City of Atumwa.
Any questions for Phil? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Resolution number 163-2022, authorizing the city administrator to sign a contract with Gov HR for recruitment services not to exceed $25,000 for the Director of Finance position. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 163-2022.
Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
I believe Phil is going to go ahead and take this as well.
I, yes, I will do that. So this is, this is coming before you. We've been actively trying to recruit and hire the finance director for the city. We've had a couple of bites. We've expanded our search platform into different arenas. Still haven't had much success with people that are looking. We did have a couple of individuals that we made a tentative offer to. They both rejected it based off of price and other jobs that they had available. At this point, we feel, myself and HR Director Kojo, feel that we need to contract services, in this case with Gov HR. Those recruiting services would not exceed $25,000. We had looked at a number of different, and the staff summary covers a lot more of the avenues we tried. This one seemed to be the, the best, the best offer for the price available. Palmer Group is out of Des Moines. They're a little more local, but they were 27% to 30% of the eventual hiring rate. And there was a, more of a limited guarantee that, one, they would place somebody and, two, that if the person would stay for 90 or 100 days, depending on what rate you paid. With Gov HR, the price is lower, but they do guarantee that they will find somebody for us and that that individual will stay for a minimum of 12 months. If they are not successful in finding someone the first time around, or that person doesn't stay for that 12-month period, they continue the process until they have somebody that meets that, and they do not charge us for the, the second iteration if necessary. Based on what we're seeing with this being a specialized position, we are recommending this. Talking with Gov HR, they're saying municipal recruitments are 12 to 16 weeks on average. Positions in finance can almost double that. So even with their services, headhunting, reaching out to their contacts, trying to attract somebody to the city in this position, it will still most likely take a little bit of time to do that. Without it, I, I don't know how long it will honestly take.
Council have any questions for Phil? Okay, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Resolution number 166-2022, approving and authorizing execution of an amended and restated collateral assignment related to an agreement for private development with HCI 52501 Investment LLC. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 166-2022.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Zach?
All right, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. The development agreement with HCI 52501 was for the Benita Project, and it permits the developer to assign right, title, and interest in economic development grants that are provided by the city to a lender. This is because a lot of times in the TIF projects, they take out a note to borrow against the value of those rebates, and then those rebates, the banker would like to have go directly to the bank instead of, you know, anything that could prevent them from getting paid. The original collateral assignment was then completed on May 23, 2022, but the lender did seek some additional representations, warranties, and commitments from the city, and so our attorneys had to work with the lender's attorneys for a period of time to develop this amended, or this, do they call it amended? Yeah, amended and restated collateral assessment agreement, which they did recommend, having reviewed, that the city adopts. It does provide a mechanism to allow the developer to reassign those grants and for the lender to finance the project.
Any other questions? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Resolution number 167-2022, approving an agreement between the City of Atumwa and the Greater Atumwa Convention and Visitors Bureau Incorporated. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 167-2022.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Okay, Phil?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. So this was mentioned just a little bit ago under the admin report about the agreement, the extension of the agreement between Mida Atumwa, otherwise known as Greater Atumwa Convention Visitors Bureau, and the city. So like was mentioned, it was currently a two-year agreement with a two-year extension, and it was at 35% of the hotel motel tax collected by the city. The proposed agreement in front of you was restated to include a little bit more of the legalese and other things for a more sound agreement. In addition to that, it is requesting to bump up the contribution from 35% to 40% of that hotel motel tax and moving it from a two-year and two to a three-year with a one-year extension, essentially making that three-year extension with a year to address any issues or anything with the upcoming contract and kind of giving that year buffer to between contracts. This was something actually, and Councilman Rowe can speak to this, with the, prior to the current extension that is about to expire here, there was talk about moving from the 35 to the 40% a couple of years ago, but with that two and two, it was kind of left the same and to be addressed in the next agreement, which is the one that is before all of you.
Yeah, so just to round out what Phil had said, when Andy Whartonberg made presentation to the council at that point in time, we were in a little bit of a precarious position as far as finances went. We, we were all impressed with the work at that time that Andy had done and encouraged him to come back when the contract was up, assuming that he was going to, or in this case now Laura, was going to continue the good work, the, the council, and obviously, we were making a promise that a lot of the council couldn't keep because they weren't on the council, but the, the general directive at that time was to keep doing the good work and it would be recognized at the next reading of the contract.
And so one of the things for current council knows is hotel motel tax. This is a tax that's paid when people stay in our hotels, motels in the city. There's a percentage of their bill that they pay as this hotel motel tax. That comes back to the city, and then this is saying that 40% of that amount that we receive would go back to, in this case, Mida Atumwa. So the better they do at getting people to stay overnight, the more money is available, the more money that can go to them, and then the other 60% shared with Bridgeview Center, the Beach of Atumwa are the two main other contributor, beneficiaries of this revenue.
Council have any questions for Phil or comments?
So just to clarify, so if we bumped this up to 40%, are we taking 5% from somebody else to give to them, or like, how does that work?
So that, yeah, that other 5% is coming from the share that goes to Bridgeview Center and the beach to offset losses that, that they may have.
So are they both going to take 2.5% cut to give to Mida Atumwa?
Well, but we should also, again, as Laura talked, yeah, as Laura talked about, there, her, the Greater Atumwa is, or Mida Atumwa is doing the
Marketing.
the marketing for the beach and the, and Bridgeview. They're doing a lot of that too.
Yeah.
So then it would break it down to, what, a 60/40, so 30/30 and 40% when they're doing, you know, 10% of their, probably more than 10% is going to the beach and Bridgeview Center too.
I think it's important to note also that that extra 5% that, that Mida Atumwa is getting, we're more than getting the return in that extra 5% through the events that are coming through Bridgeview Center that the City of Atumwa does not have to subsidize at the end of the day. We are receiving the additional tax benefit from the folks that are coming into town, so that, that 5% could, by not giving them that, that could be far more detrimental than just giving them the 5%.
And then this payment is actually more of that incentive-based, so the better they do, the better everyone does.
Right. I don't mean to, I don't mean for it to sound like I don't want them to have this, but I'm just trying to figure out, because right now, all I know is they get 40%. So does like the beach get 30% and then the, and then the Bridgeview gets 30%?
It gets split between the other two based on need and finances. So I mean, if Bridgeview Center has a stellar year and they don't need the additional revenue, then it's most likely going all to beach. If beach has a down year because of weather, you know, more maybe going there. So it, the rest of the funds are split between the two as needed. And year over year, you may not see any loss. So even though theoretically they're going to gain 5% more to Mida Atumwa, if they generate additional revenue, that 65% that was shared between the beach and, and Bridgeview before may be the same at 60% as it was at 65.
Okay. That's kind of, yeah, that's kind of what I was wondering about is how does that all be broken down? Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Resolution number 168-2022, approving an extension of the agreement with Integrity Golf Group LLC for the management of the Cedar Creek Golf Course. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 168-2022.
Move the recommendation as presented. Second.
Okay, Phil?
All right, thank you. So currently, the city contracts with, excuse me, with Greg Wilson of Integrity Golf Group for the operation and maintenance of Cedar Creek Golf Club, Golf Course. The original agreement began, well, I should say that the current agreement that we're under began on January 1, 2019, and is set to expire December 31, 2023. So we are a little ahead of that curve. The agreement does allow for a five-year extension upon agreement of both parties. The reason this is coming before you tonight instead of about a year from now is that the golf course had a irrigation pump that aged out and needed to be replaced. And so due to the significant cost of that repair, Integrity was requesting a little more certainty that they will be able to continue the operations into that next five-year period so that they have time to help weather the cost that they have put in into that infrastructure. And this early approval of that management agreement would run the contract through December 31 of 2028. So we'll just give that extra five years early. Talking with Director of Public, Parks and Rec, Rathge, he, the course is running well. I actually had an opportunity to play it this last weekend with the TenCo Golf Tournament, and, and the course did look very nice. So with all the hot weather and everything we've been receiving, if, if that pump hadn't been purchased, I'm sure the course would have looked much different. So this is simply just asking to extend that contract about a year earlier than you would otherwise do. Or be requested to do.
Any questions for Phil? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Resolution number 169-2022, approving a limited extension of the agreement with Heartland Humane Society for the provision of animal care services. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 169-2022.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Okay, Phil?
All right. So this one, the city currently contracts with Heartland Humane Society for provision of animal care services. That, that agreement, it actually ended on March of this year, and it was the unique date. Unfortunately, it was missed as far as when that came up due. I have a feeling there will be some changes, whether it's through funding or other things, that Heartland may be requesting. In order to be able to work through all those, but still provide that assurance that we have an agreement between the city and Heartland Humane, I'm requesting that we have this short-term gap-type thing extending the current contract with a, a minor revision in there through the end of this year, giving staff and Heartland the time to be able to negotiate an updated agreement that would be brought forward. If we got that done in the next 30, 60 days, we'd bring it forward at that point and, you know, prior to the end of the year, but at least just give us time to work through any details of an updated agreement. The minor change just for other than dates and the mayor's signature is the, the current agreement listed Pipestone specifically as the provider for anything that Heartland wasn't able to do. This takes that out and says any veterinarian or qualified boarding facility could do whatever service was needed for the respective animal. Other than that, the rest of the agreement stayed intact until such time as we could look to revise it.
Council have any questions for Phil?
I don't really have a question, but I do have a comment that when we are working through this contract with them, I do want to make sure that we are really looking at the services that they're providing, because they are providing a lot for the city, and I think Officer Williams could talk more on that at the time if needed. But I want to make sure that they're compensated the way that they need to be so that they can run a shelter or perform the duties that we need and are asking them to. And I think that there is some language and potentially the ordinance that may assist some of the things that they're lacking. So I look forward to seeing what that contract will be.
Any other comments or questions for Phil? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Resolution number 3197-2022, amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Atumwa, Iowa by conditionally rezoning property generally located at 1321 Asbury Drive in the City of Atumwa and directing the zoning administrator to note the ordinance number and date of this change on the official zoning map. Recommendation pass third consideration and adopt ordinance number 3197-2022.
Move the recommendation as presented. Second.
Okay, Zach?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. This is the third consideration of the ordinance. We have heard this at the last two meetings. The ordinance provided a, or sorry, a previous ordinance had provided a conditional rezoning for the property at 1321 Asbury from R1 to R5 for a multifamily residential project, not to exceed 63 units and to begin within five years. That ordinance provided for an extension if the developer was able to demonstrate pursuing completion of a project. The owner did provide a progress report which described previous applications and provided the plan for getting the project off the ground, and so this ordinance would grant that extension as the previous ordinance had called for.
Council have any questions for Zach? Not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Go ahead and go.
Okay. Ordinance number 3198-2022, repealing and replacing Chapter 7, animals and fowl of the municipal code of the City of Atumwa, Iowa. Recommendation pass first consideration of ordinance number 3198-2022.
Move the ordinance as presented.
Second.
Okay, Phil?
Okay. Well, this has been, first identified and addressed in November 16th, 2021. City Council officially received the petition, and we've had a number of public meetings and commentary periods, received a number of input from the public, both those that live in the city and that, those that don't. At the May 3 meeting, a revised version of the code was presented. There were a number of questions, suggestions for further revision at that meeting, and the item was postponed. On May 24th, the council and staff, along with the city attorney, had a work session to discuss further revision to the code. And aside from the minor revisions, grammatical cleanups, there were a few changes of note taken from the work session, which included a revised definition of pit bull terrier, additional restrictions regarding tethering, clarification of the violation subject to simple misdemeanors. With those additions and revisions, it is being presented to council for consideration and adoption for this first reading tonight.
Any questions for Phil before I let the individuals speak on this agenda item?
No questions. I have some comments, so I can wait until after.
Okay. Okay. I'll go ahead and just call everybody up here individually. And if you can, try and give us your name and your address. And just for time's sake, please try and not duplicate the same comments over and over if you have something different to contribute. We'd appreciate it if you could kind of try and not duplicate a lot of the same comments. Felicia Morrow?
Have you been trying my name? You did a good job. You said it right. My name is Felicia Morrow. My address is 7133 120th Avenue. Animal activists are wondering why we do not have anything in this ordinance pertaining to the Pet Act. Why is there nothing in Section 743B or C exceptions and regulations for dealing with animals when a natural disaster occurs? Atumwa is known as the city of bridges. We are a river city. Did you know that Atumwa has the potential of eight out of 18 natural disasters included in the National Risk Index? Cold wave, hail, heat wave, ice storm, lightning, riverine, river, flooding, strong winds, and winter weather. 90% of natural disasters include flooding. Personally, my biggest concern, which I've already stated and I want to state again, is not only for myself as a dog owner, as an animal welfare activist, but for this community, is for freezing winter conditions, cold waves, rapid fall in temp within the 24 hours, extreme low temps for extended periods, and flooding. The Pet, Pet Act is Pet Evacuation and Transportation Standards Act. It is a federal law passed in 2006 and is a major step forward in how pets are treated and protected during disasters. And would love to see our city do so in writing this as well. Some numbers for you. A pool in 2006 found 44% of people who did not evacuate from Katrina had made this choice because of their pets, keeping themselves and their families in harm's way due to dark options for their pets. Those who did evacuate with their pets only need to be told by officials that they must leave their animals behind. An estimated 100,000 pets were separated with 70,000 dying. Natural disasters include all types of severe weather, which with potential to pose a significant threat to human health, safety, and property. Living in a flood zone with breed-specific language less than two miles away when we need to escape the elements, when natural disasters strike, trust me, like I've said before, I absolutely do not want to bring my dog to this town. It is absolutely the last resort if I need to in freezing conditions, if the road is flooded. I have nowhere else to go other than to refuge to Atumwa with my family. And I refuse to leave my dog behind regardless of its breed. And personally, I do not see how any local government can enforce someone to do so. I refuse to leave him at my residence unattended in freezing temperatures as well as when my road is impassable to, due to flooding. Everyone has seen those commercials from ASPCA, and it's heartbreaking. Short story time. Just a couple of years ago, I had made it through the river. The road was completely flooded. Our road is a mile and a half long. And just to give you a little reference, I'm 5'2". The water was up to here on me at the highest point. We had to walk through it, so that way we knew that we could get out when we did. I had to leave my vehicle there, abandoned at my home. We began the long fight against the current. Like I stated, my record, for record, I am 5'2", and the highest water was chest-high. That, obviously, the current, you can imagine. The issue with our breed-specific language, known as the pit bull ban, it only goes off of terroristic, terroristics that are physical, that this ordinance constitutes as a danger, despite looking at the PSI of other breeds or other breeds' aggressive tendencies. Undoubtedly so, it's discrimination against three mixed breeds. With our revision as it sits, pit bulls are not defined as a domestic animal. And as the mayor wanted, I went on ahead and made notes on three visions. Section 74, cruelty to animals doesn't include pit bull, dangerous animal, wild animal, hybrid. So does this include pit bulls? Section 713, B, five hitching animals, while I agree with no tethering and I appreciate you adding it, should this tail and frame also be included in Section 722, confining dogs? So this includes outside pets as well. Section 714, animals on sidewalks, grass areas, doesn't apply to dogs and cats, but to any team or beast of any kind on the pedestrian or bicycle trail or levee system. Again, I live on the river. I had to escape the elements in an emergency situation of a natural disaster. And I had to escape with my dog during that, that natural disaster. I had to wait on the bike trail levee system for arrival, for help to arrive. Section 718A, noisy animals, I'm not for sure if it is provocation, but I would think that a stranger parked outside of a residence for 20 minutes would stand for provocation. Please note that Section 722A, 5, there is no Section 23 as stated. Section 727, license required. Any dog over seven months needs to be licensed. Why not puppies? Why the city clerk does not want, sorry, why would the city clerk not want a record of all dogs licensing and vaccinations? There is no empowerment set in revision for pit bulls or how many days till you have to get them out of city limits. I am hoping that you guys would be lenient if this did occur, but without it being in the code, I have no clue. Section 748, clarification, penalties for what? Which part? So instead of $100, is it $250 for the first offense? Are these guidelines timelines of violation? Does the violation drop or go away after so many years? This revision is still a great area as it comes down to 100% opinion of the animal control officer at 100% expense of the owner. Even if the officer is believed to be wrong, why would anyone agree with the law that puts any dog at risk of being destroyed due to a peace officer? Being under no duty to confine or capture said dangerous animal with no obligation to notify or contact the owner prior to its destruction. And Section 78 states, if anyone hits an animal, they are required to stop, assist said animal, and notify the owner. Why is it that the city is under no responsibility or obligation to notify if they destroy? There are many kennel clubs, including the American Kennel Club, American Veterinary Medical Association, the National American Control Association, the American Bar Association, American Society of the Prevention Center, the list goes on, that oppose BSL and recognize the inequalities inherent fallacies of such laws. With that being said, the city is using the AKC description of dogs by ignoring that they are against BSL. The proposed ordinance states, under the definition of pit bull terrier, using the AKC and UKC terroristic standards of American Staffordshire Bull Terrier, American Bull Terrier, Pit Bull Terrier, sorry, and Staffordshire Bull Terrier. In closing, I would like to say once again, Atumwa is known as the city of bridges, a river city, and needs to put, I would like to see exemptions and regulations dealing with animals in a natural disaster if it had occurred in an emergency, especially under Section 743B or C. While the ordinance uses the physical terroristics, I ask that the city council also acknowledge the true terroristic definition provided by the UKC. Pit Bull Terrier, American Pit Bull Terrier, make excellent family companions and have always been noted for their love of children. The American Pit Bull Terrier is not the best choice for a guard dog since they are extremely friendly even with strangers. And I would also like to note, according to the New York Times news article, pit bulls are not used as police dogs because they are too friendly. Aggressive behavior toward humans, going back to the UKC.
Ma'am, we've got just three minutes for each person, so can you kind of wrap it up?
Yep. That all three breeds are well within, with children, if you'd like to know. And please do look at that definition for just the characteristics itself.
Thank you.
Hey, Mayor, before the next question, can I ask that whoever comes up to slow down? If you talk too fast, we cannot understand you, and we cannot keep up, and we cannot write notes or look at what you're talking about. So when you're rattling things off, and I'm a fast talker, so I get it. But if we could just slow down when we talk so we can hear and understand and process, thank you.
Okay, next is Larissa Droes.
Larissa Droes, 1202 J Street. First, I'd like to take a moment to thank Councilmember Galloway for her time and effort and passion involved in looking into and changing the animal-related ordinances. We truly do appreciate your effort. The City of Atumwa is violating citizens' rights to own property, though many of us consider them family. With no hearing and no due process, the City of Atumwa is giving one person, Officer Williams, the ability to determine this piece of property looks dangerous to me. It's banned. Atumwa is very much in the minority on this issue in Iowa. Atumwa is one of less than 10% of Iowa communities that take away citizens' rights to own property because it looks like a pit bull. Officer Williams said in the work session, if it looks like maybe 20% to 30% pit bull, I usually leave them alone. This statement alone shows that this process is completely subjective and capricious. Include the statement made by one of the attorneys that represents the city. If a DNA test shows it's not a pit bull, we can still get them based on physical appearance. This shows that it's not about justice, but about power and control. A citizen cannot be expected to know what another person's opinion is without having a conversation. How can we agree to let one person's opinion change so many people's lives? The law is supposed to be objective, not subjective. The law should be logical, not arbitrary, based on facts, not opinions or appearances, with liberty and justice for all. According to the AKC, breed-specific laws do not protect communities. Instead of holding all dog owners accountable for their behavior, breed-specific laws only place restrictions on owners of certain types of dogs. An owner intent on using his or her dogs for malicious purposes, such as dogfighting, will simply be able to switch to another type of dog, thereby continuing to jeopardize public safety. Under BSL, the list of regulated breeds or types grow every year without ever addressing the underlying issue of responsible dog ownership. We need to start punishing the deeds and not the breeds. That's all.
Thank you. Kathy Caldwell?
Hi, guys. My name is Kathy Caldwell, and I live at 1510 Greenwood Drive. I would like to speak with everyone here about pit bull people. Not just here, everybody who's listening at home, everybody who's in the back. Because I can't count how many times I've heard people refer to them as those people. Those people who get pit bulls because they know it's going to stop the cops at the door while they throw away their drugs. That's nice. That's nice. And the council has stated that they will not reward people for breaking the law. I would like to share something with you, so hopefully that you will see this situation from a different perspective. Growing up, I had a very strong fear of dogs myself. It stemmed from a violent attack by a German shepherd when I was a teenager. We had had problems with the German shepherd, and I had told my mother several times that that German shepherd was getting dangerous. I was often left alone with my brothers and sisters because I grew up in a very dysfunctional family and very dangerous environment. One day, this German shepherd went off on my toddler sister. Still, to this day, I can't figure out what triggered it. That German shepherd had her entire head in his mouth with his jaw clamped down. I was 14 years old, and I beat the crap out of that dog, and I pulled his jaws off of my sister. So I understand when people talk about the horrible things that they experience through a dog bite, a dog attack, when they have a dog come up to them growling. I get the fear. I've lived it. I understand it. For years, it traumatized me. And then I met a friend who had a pit bull. And then I met another person who had a pit bull, and then I met another and another. And by interacting with these pits, I no longer was afraid of dogs in general. I have met and talked with many pit bull owners, not just here in Atumwa, not just here in Iowa. The majority of those people will tell you the same thing about why they own pit bulls. Sometimes they'll just say it in different ways. Sometimes you have to take the time to actually listen to what they are saying. Sometimes you have to look into their eyes and watch that grin that comes across their face as they light up when they talk about their dog, who is so much more than a dog. People ask, why do owners get pits when they know it's against the law? The same question has been asked so many times. Why be honest about being gay when it was against the law? Why be in a multiracial relationship when it was against the law? It's because of compassion. It's because of a spiritual connection. It's because of love. Pit bull owners do not get a pit bull because they are trying to stick it to the man. They don't get an ego boost by thumbing their nose at the law. They don't feel superior or untouchable. But they do get a pit bull for several different reasons. Most of the time, they didn't even know what type of dog they were getting. They just knew it was some kind of a mix or a mutt. By the time they've realized, they've already fallen in love with that dog. Some people find a dog who needs help, and their compassion for one of God's creatures, they take that dog in, and they fall in love. A lot of people who own pits feel the law is discriminatory. They know these dogs deserve the same humane treatment as any other animal, and they are in love. I have even listened to people talk about their lives very similar to my own experiences, coming from traumatic childhoods and experiences where they were rejected as children by their own parents, their schools, their communities. And they understand how much that hurts. And they see it happening to pit bulls, and they relate on such a personal level that it evolves beyond the owner and its property relationship. They connect with these dogs in their soul. They love these dogs. Now, I know many of us would describe ourselves as animal lovers, but how many of us truly say they love all animals? What about pest animals like a possum? What about the animals that have a ton of superstitions about them, like bats? What about the animals that aren't the designer dogs that have been neglected and abandoned? What about the ones who need someone to love and who would do so much to get someone to love them back? We've got two dogs right now that are looking at being euthanized simply for the fact that there is nowhere to take them. They haven't done anything wrong. They didn't bite anybody. They weren't aggressive. They just looked the wrong way. I thought about bringing my dog here tonight. He isn't a pit bull. Honestly, I don't know what kind of dog he is. He was a gift to me 12 years ago when my last dog passed away. And he is more than my dog. He's more than a family member. He's more than my best friend. My dog loves me unconditionally. It doesn't matter how much money I have. It doesn't matter how much I weigh or what I look like or how popular I am. My dog loves me. Three years ago, my dog risked his own life to save mine. That dog would do anything for me, and I would do anything for my dog. I go out of my way to make sure he's healthy and comfortable. I make tons of sacrifices so I can put him first. I can't count how many times I've woken up with a backache just because I let him hog the bed. the bed. I read and learn all the time about dogs because I want to be the best that I can be for him. I could go on and on about how my dog is more than just a dog, what he truly means to me. His world revolves around my existence. It is the very least I can do to make sure his world is the best there is. My feelings towards my dog are not unique. Most people feel this way about their dog, even the ones who own pit bulls. They don't disobey the law because they want to be criminals, they don't do it to disrespect you, the city, the police, or the philosophy of law. They do it because they love these animals.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kristi Munt.
Hello, Kristi Munt, 109 South Cherry. I don't have any prepared statement. I just want to thank the council for stepping up on the treatment of animals, making sure the animal is treated well, because 95% of the time, if the animal is not treated well, it will be aggressive. The no tethering laws are fantastic. I still do not agree that we should have a pit bull ban. I have fostered many a pit bull. I have two mutts that I've rescued from the, one from the streets and one from a shelter. Everybody knows my crazy little dogs, but they're not pit bulls. But I've had pit bulls with these dogs and have not had a problem, not one at all. And as the last woman said, we do everything for our dogs. I don't go on trips because I can't be gone from them for more than a few hours so that they are taken care of and looked after because they depend on the people. And the dog is only a reflection of the person that takes care of it, or lack of taking care of it. So, thank you for the no tethering laws, giving them some, and hopefully it will be enforced that when we do call in, that it's followed up on and it's reported on. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa Childs.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Childs. My address is 5 Woodshire Drive. In addition to being a resident of Atumwa, I'm a dog trainer of more than 10 years, certified through the Certification Council for Professional Dog Owners. I'm here today to ask you for an enforceable law based on science, not opinion, and using our city's resources wisely. I first want to applaud our council for considering stronger protections for animal welfare, cracking down on irresponsible ownership and inhumane, dangerous practices like 24/7 tethering. Thank you. But I do want to point out those new regulations are going to require time and resources to enforce, both of which are currently being wasted on a key part of this ordinance that is just simply unenforceable. You've heard me say it before, and I'm going to say it again, no one can accurately determine a dog's breed by looking at physical characteristics. To help you understand, I brought a series of pictures to share with you today. Each should have a copy of this. I want you to take a look and note that six of these dogs have been adopted or are currently available for adoption right here in Atumwa at Heartland Humane Society, listed under breeds that are not banned. Families are going to adopt them, families have adopted them, fully believing that they will be welcome in Atumwa. The seventh, one dog on here, was removed from her family, taken from children who love her for being a pit bull. Are you confident, looking at these pictures, that you know which one? The fact is, we're wasting city resources chasing down an extremely small percentage of pit bulls in this town. Even if you can get rid of the ones who look the most pit, you're never going to get close to getting them all. So what's the point of taking these dogs from their families? What about this is going to make our city safer? My heart goes out to those who shared emotional stories of tragic attacks by pit bulls, and I can't begin to imagine the heartbreak felt by Brooke, who shared about her dog being killed in Adair. But, please do not miss this fact. Adair had a pit bull ban at the time of this attack, and it did not stop it from happening. I'm not asking you to ignore the fact that pit bulls are powerful dogs, and I fully support rules requiring owners of powerful dogs to take the steps necessary, ensuring that their dogs engage safely in our community. And I know the council has mentioned concern that changing the current breed ban would reward those breaking the law. I'm proposing you hold them to a new and enforceable standard of responsible dog ownership instead of perpetuating a law that cannot be consistently enforced. If you don't want to listen to me today, listen to the 77% of citizens who said it's time to get rid of this breed ban in the City of Atumwa's own poll. It's time. There is nothing good gained by keeping a ban that cannot be consistently enforced in place. I'm asking you to hear the citizens of Atumwa and vote no on this ordinance until breed-specific language is removed. Do the right thing, use our city resources wisely, and hold all dog owners responsible for their dog's care and behavior. In case you're still wondering, this little black dog right here, that's the one, nine years old, a senior dog, all of 50 pounds, that's the dog who was kicked out of Atumwa for being a pit bull. And that's what this ban is doing, taking dogs who've lived all their lives, senior dogs, out of their homes because of how they look. Thank you.
Thank you. Shannon Murphy.
She's taller than me. So, my name's Shannon Murphy, I live at 1131 Monroe. I do have a pit bull terrier, she's my service dog. She's super friendly, I know you all have seen her. I truly believe I would be shocked if there's a regular police officer that has not been to my house, and she just is all excited to see him wagging her tail, they've pet her, it's not been an issue. I understand some dogs can be an issue, and I do understand and respect where you guys are coming from and your concerns, but I personally feel like the group of us has tried to address every pinpoint issue that you would have with repealing this ban, and you're not meeting us even halfway, even 10% of the way. Melissa Childs has volunteered to donate her time and her services. We formed We Care as a nonprofit so that we can assist low-income people with spay and neutering and shots. And, you know, the worst thing that you can do with any dog is hide it away and not socialize it, and that is what this ban encourages. It's just not a good thing. And I'm still offended, seriously, lions and tigers and bears and pit bulls online. I mean, it just doesn't make sense. And this is going to be a little bit of a tweaker, not tweaker, but just, you know, an odd comment, but it is discriminatory. I always say BSL is BS for bull. But, you know, it wasn't that long ago that people thought certain things about Dobermans and Rottweilers. And if you guys want to leave pit bulls on the ban, I have no issue with it if you make it equal. So every single breed that has as strong or stronger bite with a PSI also needs to be included, including Dobermans, Rottweilers, Cancursos, Dojo Argentinos, Mastiffs. Yeah. Let's make it fair. If you want implement training classes and restrictions, okay, but let's make it fair. People shouldn't have to be forced to get rid of their dogs, because after you have them for a while, they are family members. I'm seriously disappointed with the revision that's been presented tonight. I don't know. So, does anybody have any questions for me?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Patricia Simmons. Oh, I'm sorry, Patrick, it was Patrick Simmons, I'm sorry. Okay, any other comments by council or by Phil?
I will start. You know, I have been on this council long enough to this point in time that I know that usually when you open your mouth, you're going to make somebody extremely angry. Sometimes that group sways, depending on the issue, and I'm sure that what I'm about to say is probably going to make everybody in this room and everybody watching that represents this group extremely angry. And I guess I have to live with that. This, to begin, you know, I've seen on social media all day long, we heard it from a speaker tonight, you know, the ordinance that's in front of you, much like the ordinance that was put in front of council two years ago, much like the ordinance that was put in front of council four or five years ago, is not perfect. It will never be perfect because people that were not perfect wrote it, and it'll always be an imperfect document that needs revision from time to time. That's the beauty of government, we can come back after we see that something's not working and adjust as necessary. But, with that being said, I see no reason that we look at kicking the can down the road, so to speak, to continually adjust and adjust and adjust. This ordinance is about more than pit bulls, I think everybody in the room has acknowledged that to this point. So, at risk of having a dog that's on a four-foot leash suffer for another six months, because we are not happy with the language in one part, it seems odd to me. And I want to speak to the responsible dog ownership here for just a second. Every law is about accountability, plain and simple, and with accountability, we have to accept the fact that responsibility actually means something. And as a dog owner myself, I would never do something with my dog that would jeopardize that dog's life. I would never put my dog, much like a human, I would never put my dog in a position that that dog might get taken away, it might get killed, it might get hurt, whatever. So I question responsible dog ownership, and even making an amendment tonight that would change the ordinance to somehow say, "Okay, we'll have pit bulls in Atumwa, but we need to have a fence in place, the dog needs to be neutered, the dog needs to have training, the dog needs to be insured." If we changed that rule tonight, those animals would still be illegal in the city limits. So what we have effectively done is take an already stressed police department and stress them even more, because now they have to chase a wide-open net of dogs that are in town, because the people in this room have already said these dogs are not socialized dogs because of the city ordinance, which I would agree with, absolutely. But we're not doing ourselves any favors right now by changing the rules and allowing people who have already said that we will not obey the law, we put conditions in place that will allow people to openly not obey the law. That makes absolutely no sense. This council, every council that I have sat on has been publicly chastised for making laws that nobody can enforce and nobody will follow. And here's another example, where we have people coming out of the woodwork and saying, "We want you to change these laws to something that's not enforceable." So I guess as a councilperson, I'm going to ask, what does the city want? Does the city want us to just step back and say, "We're not going to make rules that are enforceable"? If that's the case, what do we need a city council for to begin with? And I'm going to tell you, just speaking personally, again, I've been on this city council long enough to know one thing. If this rule gets changed and a pit bull bites and kills a baby, kills an elderly person, kills a person with disabilities, it isn't the people who, it isn't the people who fought for this change that's going to be blamed for that. It's not the pet owners that's going to be blamed for that. I can point to 2016 in Atumwa, Iowa, where a child was mauled and ended up having to have extensive surgery. It wasn't the parent that was blamed, it wasn't the dog owner that was blamed, it wasn't the child that was blamed, it was miscellaneous person, it was the City of Atumwa for not enforcing the rules. In 2000, when a child was killed, it wasn't the owner that was blamed, even though the owner deserved 120% of the blame, it was the police department that was blamed for not stopping a dogfighting ring. It was the police department that was blamed because they didn't break up a drug house. So, if and when another child dies, it isn't the dog owner that gets blamed, it isn't the dog that gets blamed, it's that man right there, it's that man right there, it's that man right there, it's you, it's you, it's you, it's you, and it's me, it's us that gets the blame for it. I want to be able to sleep at night.
Does council have any other comments?
I do. I think Councilperson Rowe makes a passionate argument. However, I would have to say a few other things. So I do agree with Councilperson Rowe that if we were to change the ordinance tonight and allow, or well, not tonight, but in three readings, allow pits to be legal in Atumwa under the high risk them, we would be setting up citizens to fail. However, I do think that we do need to start being forward-thinking. This issue, BSL, has come to the State House in the Iowa legislation now twice, the first time not making it to committee, this last time making it to committee, and I would imagine in the next two years, it will make it through funnel. And again, I'm making a prediction just kind of by watching. So I do think that the City of Atumwa needs to start being forward-thinking. I think we need to start, if these are the expectations to have pit bulls in the area, then we need to start working with people who have or own pit bulls, or who have or want to own pit bulls. Obviously, they're not illegal right now, but this is something that's going to happen, I think, in the near future, and we need to be forward-thinking. I think that whatever happens after these three readings, which we'll kind of see tonight where this is going to go, but I think that if pit bulls are still not allowed in Atumwa, we cannot stop the conversation there. This conversation needs to continue, and it needs to continue on how we're going to get to a point where pit bulls are able to be in Atumwa. To your point, to another point, too, we talk about, we're just labeling pit bulls as dangerous animals. There are, I think someone out there said, other animals are dangerous, too, so why aren't we considering other animals, other dogs, if we're going to keep breed-specific legislation? I pointed this out during our work session that, and so I think we are very, very emotional over this issue still, it is an emotional issue. A child did die by a pit bull, I understand that. But I do think we need to be forward-thinking, and we need to figure out how to have pit bulls in Atumwa because they're here. And unless Officer Williams and Chief Farrington and the rest of the department are going to every single door, how are we going to truly enforce this? And again, I understand what Councilperson Rowe says, is that if it's amended after the three readings, we're setting people up also. I understand that. And I also understand that the council will bear burden and the police department will bear burden if a child were to be hurt by a pit bull. I do want to say that I think that what we have done with this ordinance is, I commend us for that, because I think that we have added a lot, and I think we've done some really positive things with that. I will say that I still wish that there was better language for tethering, and I understand that there's concern about the enforcement, but I would have liked to see length of time in the ordinance, but I do appreciate that we do have some tethering language, or stricter tethering language in there. I also am glad that we have added an irresponsible owner aspect to this, because as we all know, when animals aren't treated right, we do see aggression in dogs, or animals in general. Again, I don't think that when we leave after these three readings that the work is done, and I think we need to continue to move forward with figuring out how to have all, well, not cheetahs, tigers, bears, but dogs in Atumwa.
Any other council members want to make any comments? Okay, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hole?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
First consideration of the ordinance.
What did she say?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes.
Huh?
You have to talk louder.
We can't hear you.
Yes.
Sorry.
Yes. Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
No.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Okay. The next item on the agenda is where I ask the audience if anybody wants to address any items that were not on tonight's agenda, and we do have one gentleman that I think wants to briefly speak, Michael Herville?
Harville. Greetings. Thank you for your consideration. My name is Michael Harville. I reside at 423 Appinose. Please forgive me, I'm not used to public speaking. I am neither a politician, a lawyer, or a terribly well-educated man. The reason I am here this evening is I would like to request a suspension of a removal order that my girls are under, placed there by the old pit bull ban. My animals were not running loose. My animals have never bitten anyone. They've never growled at anyone. They've never attacked an animal, never chased a cat or treated a coon. They have never done anything which would lead a reasonable person to believe they are pit bulls. I would like the council to consider my request at a future date. However, if the council is willing, I can make my arguments very briefly and very succinctly.
Well, it's not on the agenda, so the council's not able to act on that tonight?
I understand.
So they can set it to a future date. You are free to speak to your issue, but they cannot take action tonight?
All I am asking is that the removal order be placed in abeyance or suspended temporarily until such time as the council can consider my appeal. I request this because the animals serve as PTSD therapy dogs for me. One of them is quite elderly, and placing them in a reputable boarding facility outside the city limits would be prohibitively expensive, to the tune of nearly $3,000, if I'm to wait 30 days until your next council meeting.
The next council meeting would be July 5th.
I apologize. I'm not good at math either.
That's okay. Couple weeks, but I believe we already have this. Did we already move this to the next agenda?
Well, the request came in, and it was set to be put on the July 5th agenda already. Yes.
So we will, this will be, well, and I would like for this to be put on the agenda on the 5th. Are we able to allow him to continue? And this is probably more of a question for Chief Farrington. Is he being asked to remove the dogs from the city right now, or is it pending the appeal?
Because Mr. Harville and I have already spoken several times, and I explained to Mr. Harville that because of how our ordinance is written, it does state-
He has an absolute right to an appeal, but the animals still have to be removed from the city until that appeal decision is met. I have no discretion over that.
As I said, Your Honor, I apologize. I don't know how to correctly address a collective body. My apologies, ladies and gentlemen of the council. As I said earlier, my animals have done nothing that would make a reasonable person believe they are pit bulls. They have done nothing which would make a reasonable person believe they are dangerous. They have lived in this city peacefully for several years. Ms. Pope, can I, Ms. Pope can, I hate to bring you into this, ma'am, but she knows my animals. Her dogs know my animals. Her animals are more vicious than mine, and hers only weigh about three pounds apiece. All I'm asking is that the city council allow the status quo ante to remain, allow me to keep my animals until such time as the city council can properly examine my request.
Well, unfortunately, the council can't take any action tonight, and it's like Police Chief Farrington said, they have to follow what's in place right now, and you do need to remove your dogs out of the city until the council can hear your appeal.
Can I ask a clarifying question? I don't know what's happening right here, but-
I am requesting to be arrested because I will not surrender my- As I said, they function as PTSD service animals.
I was just going to ask if I was going to clarify, did you identify them as a therapy dog, or what did-
I am not under any obligation to do so.
No, I know. I just, you mentioned something up here, and so I was asking for clarification on, for you to restate that, because I didn't hear it. Never mind.
As I said, you have all the discretion. This council, this body can make this decision.
Unfortunately, though, we can't tonight. By Robert's Rule of Order and by state code, we cannot make that decision tonight.
I understand. So in order to keep my animals, tomorrow, Officer Williams will come and have them repossessed. It will be placed in some facility outside of my ability to control it, and I will be charged up to $100 a day to keep these animals. These animals have done nothing wrong. They have never harmed anyone. They have never bitten anyone. Officer Williams can testify that they are not aggressive. All I am asking is for a little compassion, a little mercy.
Tried to be very accommodating. Typically, it's within three days of the letter that they have to remove it, remove the animals from the city. I personally made contact with Officer Williams and told him that due to him not being able to get his appeal in so he could have it during this council meeting, we weren't going to get all strict on the three days, and we were going to work with him in a reasonable amount of time to get the animals out of the city. So we are fine with working with Mr. Harville. Maybe he can determine, not saying he's going to be arrested tomorrow at all, but maybe tomorrow Officer Williams or somebody else in the crowd can assist him with maybe a different venue where the animals could be placed. All they have to be is outside of the city. If he has a relative or a friend that lives outside the city that may be able to watch him, that's all we ask. And just by the code, if he provides us with a name and a phone number, so we can verify that the animals have been removed, then that meets and satisfies our ordinances.
Do you have somebody outside the city limits that you could temporarily keep your dogs with?
All dead.
Pardon?
All of my people are dead. These dogs are the only animals I have left.
So you have no friends or anybody that lives outside the city limits that you could temporarily house your dogs until the July 5th council meeting?
I would answer, no, but I would trust my animals with, but actually, no, I have no friends that live outside the city limits.
I wonder if the We Care group may be able to have, oh, thank you, may have someone or may be able to assist at this time, because again, we can't do action tonight. I'm seeing some heads nod back there.
I understand. Thank you. You made your position very clear.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on any item that's not on tonight's
Yes, Kristi Munt again. I want to bring up to the city council something for consideration. Each time we get up here to speak, we are asked to give our name and our address. I don't mind it going right here in the council chambers, but this is on YouTube, goes all over the world, in every place. So I would like consideration. We write it down on the piece of paper. You have it on record, if this could be something that we did not have to do.
That's a great point.
Personal, I have family that I don't want to know where I am, and it just makes it a little scary. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was a great point. Thank you.
Does anybody have any comments or want to respond to that?
I think it's a good point.
So something the council needs to take into consideration in the future. Okay. Thank you. Okay, we don't have any petitions. Is there any other communications that need to be shared tonight? Okay, if not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the city council meeting.
So moved. Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody, for attending tonight.